Good evening and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission for June 17th, 2021. The commissioners who are present this evening are at City Hall. Period. We also have staff from the city attorney and clerk's offices as well as city planning department. If you're joining us on Zoom this evening, we can see that you are here. You may observe the meeting, however, your ability to be seen on screen and talk will be muted. During the public testimony portion of the meeting, you will be unmuted and then be able to comment. Please note that we cannot take questions until the public testimony portion. If you have a process question during the meeting, please email cityclerk@meridiancity.org and they will be able to help you as soon as possible. If you simply want to watch the meeting this evening, we encourage you to watch the streaming on the city's YouTube channel. You can access it on meridiancity.org/live. And with that, let's begin with roll call.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Wheeler.
Present.
Commissioner Grove. Commissioner Seal.
Here.
Commissioner Lordcher.
Here.
Commissioner McCarville.
Here.
Absent are Commissioners Cassinelli and Yearsley.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Could I get a motion? And we have everything on the agenda as presented. Could I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The consent agenda this evening, we have approved the minutes for the June 3rd, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission and findings of fact conclusion of law for Grand Mercy Commons H-2021-2023 and findings of fact conclusion of law for Meridian Middle School Cafeteria Edition H-2021-0032. Could I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
It has been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. And so at this time, I'll briefly explain the public hearing process. We will open each item individually and then begin with staff report. Staff will report their findings and how the item adheres to our comprehensive plan and unified development code. After staff has made their presentation, the applicant will come forward and be present and to present their case and respond to staff comments. They will have 15 minutes to do so. After the applicant has finished, we will open the floor to public testimony. Each person will be called on only once during the public testimony. The clerk will call the names individually, those who have signed up on our website in advance to testify. You will then be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to address the commission. If you have previously sent pictures or a presentation for the meeting, it will be displayed on their screen and our clerk will run the presentation. All those who have signed up in advance, once after, all those who have signed up in advance have spoken, we will invite others who may wish to testify. If you wish to speak on a topic, you may press a raise hand button on the Zoom app, or if you're listening on the phone, please press star nine and wait for your name to be called. If you're listening on multiple devices, a computer and a phone, for example, please be sure to mute those extra devices so we do not experience feedback and can hear you clearly. When you're finished, if the commission does not have questions for you, you will be muted and no longer have the ability to speak. Please remember, we will not call on you a second time. After all testimony has been heard, the applicant will be given another 10 minutes to come back and respond. When the applicant has finished responding to questions and concerns, we will close the public hearing and the commissioners will have the opportunity to discuss and hopefully be able to make a final decision or recommendation to city council as needed. So at this time, we will, first item on the action items is continuing the public hearing for H-2021-0033, Topgolf, and we will begin with staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Give me just a moment here to get the presentation up. First application before you tonight is a request for a conditional use permit. This site consists of 11.56 acres of land, its own CG, located at 948 South Silverstone Way. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is mixed use regional. A conditional use permit for an outdoor entertainment recreation facility with a non-permanent outdoor stage and music venue on 11.56 acres of land in a CG zoning district to include extended hours of operation from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., seven days a week, abutting a residential zoning district. Although the subject property abuts a residential zoning district to the east, the residential homes have been removed by the developer for future expansion of the mixed use development to the west Rackham subdivision. Therefore, the extension on the hours of operation will not adversely affect abutting residential uses as there are none. In fact, the closest residence is approximately 918 feet to the south of the driving range. As you can see from the map here, you can see the site. All of these properties to the east that are selected have been cleared of residential homes, so this is now vacant property that will eventually be part of this commercial development. If you can see my pointer here, this is the nearest residential lot to the site. The outdoor stage is proposed to be located in the patio space, and that is the area here with the star on it, which will seat 71 people and will be fully enclosed by an eight-foot tall fence. During the summer months, the stage is anticipated to be used about once a week in the afternoons until the venue closes. Performances will be limited to small musical acts and no additional sound equipment will be used for any performances. All music will be channeled through the building's integrated sound system. If an extension of the hours of operation is approved, the use is still subject to the city's noise ordinance. Access is proposed from East Talonsview Lane, a private street along the southern boundary of the site, from Silverstone Way, a collector's street from Overland Road. East Talonsview Lane ends approximately 200 feet west of the east property line and is not proposed to be extended at this time. There is a public street, South Rolling Hills Drive, just off-site from the subject property to the east that is constructed as a local rural street with 24 feet of pavement and does not have curb, gutter, sidewalk, or streetlights. That, I'll just go back to this, that shows the street a little better. This north-south street is what we're talking about here, Rolling Hills, and that comes out to Overland Road on the south end. It provides access to the remaining homes in Rolling Hills subdivision and dead ends in a cul-de-sac at the north end. Because South Rolling Hills Drive currently serves residences and is not improved to urban standards, i.e. there's no sidewalk, curb, gutter, or streetlights, and has a narrow pavement width, staff recommends access be prohibited to the Topgolf site via South Rolling Hills Drive until such time as improvements are made that are deemed appropriate by ACHD and the city. All vehicular access, including construction access, should be taken via the private street, Street A, from South Silverstone Way until such time. Parking is proposed in excess of UDC standards. A minimum of 74 spaces are required, a total of 275 spaces are proposed. Conceptual building elevations were submitted as shown for the proposed structure. Building materials consist of ephesus and metal in a variety of colors, glazing, and composite paneling. Final design is required to comply with the design standards in the Architectural Standards Manual. Written testimony has been received from Amy Waddles and Michael Bowers. They are both against any access to the site from Rolling Hills Drive. Again, there is no access proposed to the site from Rolling Hills Drive, and the staff report does prohibit access until improvements are made to the street, Rolling Hills, that are acceptable by the city and ACHD, so that's a non-issue. Written testimony was also received from Paul Straits, Arco Murray. He is the applicant and he is in agreement with the conditions in the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions.
We'll go ahead and move on to the applicant. If they'd like to come forward.
They are on the phone.
On Zoom.
Yes.
Hi there. I'm Paul Straits with Arco Murray.
Okay. Please say, add name and address for the record and the floor is yours.
Sure. My name is Paul Straits and I'm at 3201 North Seminary Avenue, number 211, in Chicago, Illinois, 60657. And so, as I said, I'm Paul Straits. I'm with Arco Murray and we are Topgolf's partner in development and general contracting. And on behalf of Topgolf, I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to discuss this project with you tonight and express how excited we are to be entering Boise and the Boise market here in Meridian. Honestly, Boise is one of the top, most requested markets that Topgolf gets from all of its fans, so we're glad to finally be here and we're excited to share this with you. Little bit of background, Topgolf started in the UK and, oh, I apologize, am I able to share my screen with you?
Yes, our clerk will fix it here for you. There you go.
Got it. Okay. Apologize.
Okay, Paul, we can see your screen.
Wonderful. Thank you for that confirmation. So Topgolf started in the UK back in 2000 with the simple idea of being able to track your golf ball with an implanted microchip. And over 20 years later, it has become a go-to for families and friends to socialize around an active outdoor game all year round. Topgolf technology allows, the technology and the way that it's constructed allows the game to be played all year long, rain or shine, and so anytime you have a craving to hit some balls, Topgolf is going to be open for you. It's tech-driven, as you know, and there are various different games that you can play beyond just hitting balls to the targets to keep kids and everybody entertained all day. So to that end, Topgolf provides, or prides itself, excuse me, on being, on establishing itself with, as a local in the community, with many community-forward initiatives such as free access to high school golf teams during the day, themed spirit nights for families, discounts and specials for military heroes, and partnerships with charities like Make a Wish, Folds of Honor, and more. Economically, Topgolf is also excited to bring 200, approximately 200 positions to Meridian once the venue is open and about 150 construction jobs while the venue is being constructed. Beyond that, it expects to bring about 100, up to 100 million in economic output over the first 10 years of the venues being open in Meridian as well. It's been ranked as one of the top workplaces nationally and it is an absolute magnet for other businesses in the area, so we're excited to be a part of this BVA development here. As you saw earlier, the site plan looks like this. We have parking for up to 275 vehicles and the building here is comprised of the back of house area and dining and bar area here, patio space to the front, and then along this curve, we have all of the, what we call the T-line, all of the golf bays. Out here, obviously, is the outfield with all of the targets that you aim for, as well as a couple of screens out in the outfield that show some Topgolf-specific imagery and are angled directly towards the building and are not particularly visible from anywhere else outside of the outfield. Additionally, we have a lighting system that is integrated into the building itself and shines only into the outfield from the building. There is no outfield lighting that lights up from beyond the building, which we'll take a look at in a second, as well as the sound system was mentioned to be only from the building itself. So it's fully integrated. Any bands or musical artists that come and have their small concerts on the patio are channeled through the building and that is all designed to be contained within the building itself. Also saw this a little bit earlier, and this shows a little bit about what these net poles look like. They have been designed to withstand various degrees of wind and can be taken down in the event of emergency if ever winds get too heavy, as well as being designed to be as transparent as possible, so they're really not going to be as noticeable as a big white net that you would expect. Here's a quick look at the floor plan, probably a little too small to tell, but as I said, this is your bar and dining area, back of house areas with kitchen, and then the T-line here with some VIP bays at the end, second level, similar back of house office spaces and T-line there. As I mentioned, this lighting system is very specific and has been honed over the years of the Topgolf development, and we always strive to meet every condition that the community puts forward, and the lighting is designed specifically to each venue to reduce the glare and the spill off of the site. This image here shows how large these LED lights are. There are about four or five of them at this venue, so it would not be, we don't, like I said, we're not using metal halide lights out in the outfield like it would be like a high school football field. It's very specific and channeled just to see as far as you need to. Similarly, here's a map of what the noise looks like coming from the venue. Again, very concentrated just to this area and beyond the net poles is really not at all discernible, no more so than typical city sounds. And of course, we always comply with local ordinances and requirements, and the sound levels are always able to be controlled at all times by venue management. Then beyond that, alcohol safety is a big thing for Topgolf. The associates are all trained to deal with any customers that have overserved themselves and are trained to refuse service to anyone that has been, and they also provide plenty of security services during the peak times as well. So everything is controlled very, very closely and everyone is trained to be very attentive to all of the hitting bays and anybody that's been served. So that's a quick rundown of the Topgolf concept and project that we're excited to bring here to Meridian. At this point, I think Sonia has covered much of the specifics here. We are looking to have our business hours extended to 2:00 a.m. That's typical for all Topgolf's and allows a variety of different customers to visit throughout the day and really keep the entertainment going and give a place for community members to come and have that active socializing, you know, later at night versus going to a nightclub or the like. And as well as the, you know, noise ordinance and all of those things, we are, again, abutting up to a residential district, but those will all be rezoned here in the future with BVA developments to add to their Rackham subdivision development here. So we expect to not be in anyone's way in any way, shape, or form. So I appreciate the time today and I would love to entertain any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions for staff or the applicant at this time? Commissioner Seal.
Just real quick, the light pattern in there is, it seems like it's directed towards the freeway? Is that something that staff took a look at, or is that something that, I mean, I know they have a system that's supposed to mitigate that, but it seems like it's kind of pointing right at the freeway?
Yeah, so the lights are mounted on this curved T-line and shine out into this, into the outfield here, but really, as you can tell from that map, they are only, they're angled down towards the ground and are only lighting up about this far into the outfield. So the lights, obviously, you will see them from the freeway, but they are designed specifically for this venue and any venue that is along a roadway to reduce glare and, again, focus down towards the ground versus anywhere else.
Okay, thank you.
Our westbound traffic shouldn't have issue.
I hope not.
Yeah. I'm asking, I'm not.
Oh, yes. No, no, excuse me, no, westbound traffic will have no issue. Again, the lights, of course, will be visible. You will see that the venue is lit up, but it is not shining anywhere outside of the venue.
Any other questions? At this time, then, we'll take public testimony. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to testify on this application?
Madam Chair, we have a couple people signed in. Lynette Adsett.
You'll need to come to the microphone to... Yeah. You can certainly ask questions, you can, but you need to come to the microphone. Just state your name and address for the record.
I am Lynette Adsett. I live at 1360 Eltopaz Avenue. I did have a couple questions. They mentioned that the music is only going to be once a week. Is that for how long? I mean, that's obviously probably going to change. Do they have an answer on that? And also, what is the capacity of how many people?
We'll let the applicant address those questions. Is that all you have?
Sure.
Well, you can't come back, so.
I can't come back.
Yeah.
I think so. I did have a question, well, on the noise ordinance. So what, can you enlighten me on what, is it 10 o'clock at night?
We'll let staff address that in a minute, too.
And does that mean, does that mean the music's got to stop?
She'll address it after you're done. Yeah. So you have three minutes to ask or say whatever you want to say? That's it? Okay.
Madam Chair, same with Donna McDonald, you had a question mark, too.
All right.
Madam Chair, that's all we had signed in.
Okay. If that's everybody that's signed in, is there anybody else in the room or on Zoom that would, that did not sign in that would like to testify on this application? Certainly, come forward. And just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael Blowers. I live at 1285 South Rolling Hill. I don't want to misquote anything. I do find it a little insulting that it's an irrelevant issue that Rolling Hill is not part of this plan. I think, hopefully, everyone here is aware that the development, the future use, is that Rolling Hill will connect to the development, which will obviously then connect to Topgolf, and it becomes extremely relevant for us because we'll be dealing with 2:00 a.m. liquor license traffic coming in front of our house along with, you know, reduced easement. Well, the easement will be taken over, so, I mean, as close as 30 feet to our front door, 2:00 a.m. traffic, that's very relevant to me and the other people on Rolling Hill. So I would like to know, I mean, I'm glad Topgolf is coming, will probably be their number one customer, and I'm excited for it, but what I'm hoping for is some answers as to why can we not make Rolling Hill an emergency access only? Are there any other solutions available for this? Is there anything that we can do to mitigate speed? I don't know if anyone's been on Rolling Hill Drive. It's a third of a mile straightaway with zero mitigation, and while it may not be relevant right now, it is going to become an issue in the future when it does connect, and I have lived there eight years and I've seen people go in excess of 60 miles an hour down our street, especially people who are not aware of, they're just not thinking, they don't necessarily have, you know, ill intentions or anything. I mean, speed signs aren't obviously going to fix this, but, I mean, safety has already been mentioned once. It's obviously an issue for us, as well as noise. Is there any alternative? This is a question for anyone, an alternative for, you know, wasting city resources, calling for speed traps every single day, because I guarantee that's going to happen. We've already had to do it with the development that BVA has put forth. We've all made several calls, both to the contractor and everything. And, I mean, just some other things to think about. It's, I know personally, I'm raising four cows and it's in agriculture, there's a goat farm across the way, I mean, trailers pulling in and out all the time. It's a very odd entrance. I know people don't seem to think that it will be used, but if you're coming east to west on Overland, I can't imagine that you wouldn't use Rolling Hill Drive quite a bit to access Topgolf once it's available. So, thank you.
And I'll go ahead and start there, you can go ahead and step, but I'll have Sonia chime in on this, but my understanding is, I don't think it meant to be insulting, I think it meant to be that Rolling Hill Drive will not be part of this until it is improved at such time. I mean, they wouldn't use it as anything, even construction traffic, while it's in the current state. I'll let Sonia address your questions.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Yes, it's not a part or it's not an access or construction access for this development. However, when the property to the east comes in for development, then that is a time when this discussion should take place more so. Sorry, we can't testify from the audience, but it's not a part of this application, so it's not something that we can deal with or condition with this application. It will be with the next application. So please be a part of that public hearing process. In response, if I could, real quick, Madam Chair, to the hours of up, or the, excuse me, the hours of the noise ordinance, the city's noise ordinance.
Yeah.
That is between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. And there are certain specifications within that ordinance that they have to comply with, just as any business or any residence within the city. So it's not necessarily that they have to stop their music at 11, but it can't cause a disturbance as defined.
Right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have one person online, a Tom Peterson.
Okay.
Yeah, hi, thank you, Madam Commissioner. Tom Peterson with BVA Development at 2775 West Navigator Drive in Meridian, Idaho. Just wanted to express our support, of course, from BVA and actually Sonia really just, I raised my hand virtually and then Sonia really just addressed what I had intended to specify. As far as Eagleview Landing Phase 2, which is the houses, the 13 most northern houses that were previously part of Rolling Hills Avenue, those had been purchased and then demolished by BVA, and Phase 2 will be coming through on a separate application for annexation and rezone. And as part of that process, right now, we are conducting a traffic study, which of course will be submitted and to ACHD and the ingress and egress issues that were raised by the... And the ingress and egress issues that were raised by the gentleman there, those are all being worked through with ACHD now. And we'll be happy to bring that application in to the city, I think, within, well, certainly within 30 days. So I had raised my hand to provide that commentary and we are certainly in support of Topgolf's application here today.
Any other question or anybody else wish to testify on this application?
Madam Chair, just a quick question for the application that he's talking about. When that's noticed, that will be noticed directly on Rolling Hill Drive? Thank you.
With that, would the applicant like to come back and address the questions that have been raised? Or back?
Certainly.
Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Thank you for all of the questions and comments. In terms of the music venue stage on the patio, the intention is that it will be used likely once a week, maybe a couple of times more than that when the weather is good. But I would like to point out that the patio area has seating for roughly 70 people and there is no intention to increase that. So the, you know, that's sort of just to give you an example that this patio area and this, this stage will be very small and will host very small acts that will not be creating very large scenes or very large performances. And again, all of that music is channeled through the, through the building system itself, which is designed to be very contained within the property. So you're not going to have anybody, any of these crazy rockers bringing in any sort of amps or anything of their own. It will be very contained, no matter, no matter what's playing. So I think, I don't remember there being any other questions and Sonya answered the noise ordinance item. That is something that obviously we'll take very seriously and Topgolf does at all of their venues. Any reports of complaints are handled as is needed. And, you know, the music will continue beyond that 11 o'clock hour and being next to the freeway and fairly, fairly far away from, from anything else. At this point, I anticipate that it will be fairly agreeable for everybody when the time comes. I really appreciate your time and for allowing me to discuss this project with you. And as I said, we're very excited to be a part of the community and looking forward to working with you all very soon.
Paul, I think we had another question. One of the questions brought up was about capacity. I know you mentioned it for the patio, but if you could expand on the capacities a little bit.
Sure. The capacity at this point is there are 60 hitting bays and we anticipate there being six people at each bay. And so we have yet to have a full set of architectural drawings done for this. So as I do my quick math, likely about 500 people.
Okay, and that's at the golfing tees, not in the restaurant bar patio areas, right?
No, that's all. I did math for all of that. So that would be 360 at the tees.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant or staff? From the commission? Okay, so then at this time, could I get a motion to close the public hearing for item H-2021-0033?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for H-2021-0033. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to open the comments on this one. Besides who's going to be there the most.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Sewell.
Just looking at the plan and the concept and everything, I really like it. It's tucked in, you know, in a place that's probably a good place for it, a good placement of it. Anyway, a little concerned on the lighting part of it. I mean, even though the lights aren't going to be shining out to the freeway, they're still visible. So it's probably more like a ballpark where you could see the lights, but they're not impacting any of the drive, your driving conditions. The, I mean, it seems like it's going to be a good venue. I've been to a Topgolf before and they're, it's, it's a pretty good entertainment, for sure. I know there's a lot of people that golf in our community. To be able to do activities year round would probably be something that would be good for our community. You know, again, it's, seems like it's in a place that's going to be good as far as not interrupting or, you know, displacing anything that's already, hasn't been displaced. As far as the Rolling Hill Drive, it's, that's, I understand that it's going to be brought up at a separate meeting, but it is, understand that that is a, that is a road that's controlled by ACHD. So make sure to go to their hearings on it, so you can get more information on it. Because they, unfortunately, the city of Meridian doesn't control the roads, ACHD does. So we have to operate with them in partnership in order to make sure that the roads are designed in such a way to handle the traffic that's going to be going on them. And by the time it gets to us, it's, they've often spoken, unfortunately. So, but again, as far as this application goes, I think it's going to be a good addition to our community. I think there's a lot of people that definitely want to go there. I will be one of them if it does come in and goes to fruition. Other than that, I have no other comments.
Commissioner Wheeler, you had your.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for staff. If we can go to that one slide that I think you said that it was 900 feet from the Topgolf to that corner? I think that's what you said, what the distance was on that?
It's almost 1,000. It's just a little under.
Okay, and it was to that.
Here, to here.
Somehow I can't see that. Okay.
From this point right here is the nearest residence to, right up and around in here.
Okay. What about the residential houses off of Onyx? That's just due south of that site? Yes, are those?
It's about the same distance.
Okay. And are those also occupied by, have those been demolished or anything like that?
They are residential homes.
Okay, okay. My only, my only concern is the 2:00 AM timeframe, especially next to where there's some rural residents. And we could, we could make a, Paul, are you still there? Or is this a time not to just bring that in? Oh, sorry, okay. So we could, we could still do something along the line of approving this, but limiting the hours, correct? Is that correct, Madam Chair?
We can make that recommendation. Well, it's CUP, so that would be the, yeah, but I mean, regardless of their hours, they would still have to abide by the noise ordinance, regardless of how long they're open.
Okay. I'm just thinking more in the, just the proximity to other rural and like one of the gentlemen here mentioned that there's a, it's got some cattle and there's a goat farm and things of that nature, just the, just the noise coming up or just the activity there until through 2:00 AM. So those are just my only thoughts, but I'm also, I'm also really concerned more about the fact that I live only a mile away from the site. And that means that I'm probably going to be able to get there after dinner and spend a lot of hours there. And then I'm probably going to get your platinum membership. And then, you know, I probably will get a better golf score, but I am just a little bit concerned on those aspects of it.
Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Groff. Better? I'm not as concerned with the time aspect. I personally live a lot closer than 918 feet to the nearest 2:00 AM place and I don't see issues with it. I think that they have a good reputation of being able to handle the layout and should be able to adhere to what they've proposed. I don't see anything in this that negates or necessitates changes. So I'm in favor of moving forward with this. If anybody else doesn't mind, I'll just go and make a motion. Okay, all right. After considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H-2021-0033 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of June 17, 2021, with no modifications.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve H-2021-0033. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, we will continue with continued from June 3 of 2021, Popeyes Drive Thru. And we'll begin with staff report.
Sorry, can you give me a second to pull everything up, please? All right, thank you. Application before you is for Popeyes Drive Thru is for a conditional use permit request. Site consists of one acre of land, currently zoned CG. It's located at 6343 North Linder, which is the southwest corner of Chindon and Linder. There is existing CC zoning to the north and east. Commercial development already exists to the north and their Winko exists to the east, not yet open, very close from my understanding. But whole orchard park, also known as Linder Village Project, is under construction to the east. CG zoning is to the south and the west and there's already existing buildings there except for the lot directly to the west, which is under the same ownership as this property, but is not yet developed. The proposed drive-through is for a 2,325 square foot Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen Restaurant. It is within 300 feet of a separate drive-through, which is to the south, therefore requiring the conditional use permit. It is also subject to the specific use standards 114311 or dash four dash three dash 11. Subject site is located within the mixed-use community future land use, which contemplates generally at least three land uses for every project. However, with the site that's only one acre in size, it's generally not feasible. Mixed-use community also discusses looking beyond the site and within the whole mixed-use community area in order to meet many of the policies as it is a mixed-use designation. So when you look to the south, the west, across Chindon and Linder, there's plenty of uses within the area that are both existing and planned. And with the proposed use of another restaurant, staff does find that it meets the mixed-use community future land use designation. Originally, the site plan on the left was proposed. Staff had some recommendations to change that and we did not initially support that. Therefore, the applicant requested continuance so that we could discuss the revisions that was recommended. And since then, the applicant has revised the site plan as per the memo that addressed the commission late last week. The site plan has been revised as seen on the right. With the revisions made, staff does support the site plan and finds that the project and proposed drive-through meet the specific use standards. In general, the site plan was basically flipped north, south and east-west to make it as simple as possible. Still keeping the double drive-through and minimizing some of the conflicts that were shown on the original site plan. Largely, the original site plan contemplated the north drive aisle, which is here, basically, and they will be constructing across the shared ownership lot here. They contemplated this being as the main, staff finds that the southern one will likely be more utilized and therefore people would come in from the south and then around and utilize both this here as an escape lane and to the south as they pick up their food and can head out as noted here. Like I said, essentially, the site was just flipped east, west and north, south. There have been no written testimony for this and staff does recommend approval of the subject CUP. And I will stand for any questions.
At this time, would the applicant like to make their presentation?
My name's Eric Wiley. I live at 3584 South Bearclaw Avenue in Meridian. Madam Chair, members of the commission, thank you for meeting with us tonight. We're excited to bring this CUP project before you. We think it's a good fit for the land, a good use of that hard corner at Chindon and Linder. Not much I can say that Joe didn't say already. We met with staff after our original plan and changed it to meet their conditions. One thing I would like to add is that the lot is currently one acre. The plan is shown at .8 acres. So given your approval, we will do a lot line adjustment to make it that .8 acres. And I stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff or the applicant? Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed to testify on this application?
Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay. With that being said, is there anybody in the room or on Zoom that has not signed in that would like to testify? And I'm assuming then you have no more comments? Okay, therefore, could I get a motion to close the public hearing on H-2021-0030?
Moved.
It has been moved and seconded to close public hearing on H-2021-0030. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think we get a straightforward one and I think since they've worked with staff and made the adjustments to better flow, I think this is pretty straightforward. And unless anybody has any other comments or objections, we'd stand for a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sewell.
After considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H-2021-0030 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of June 17, 2021, with no modifications.
It has been moved and seconded to approve H-2021-0030. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. And now we get to open one. We will open, let's find out which one we're going to open here. Item number H-2021-0029, ACHD Eustic Maintenance Facility. And we'll begin with staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item before you tonight is for an annexation and zoning tied to the development plan. The site consists of 23.7 acres of land, currently zoned RUT, located at 3764 West Eustick Road, which as you can see is approximately a half mile west of 10 mile on the north side of Eustick. To the north is the Five Mile Creek and north of that, and more importantly, is the wastewater recovery facility, a city-owned and is aisle-zoned. To the east is a segment of Nine Mile Creek, which, let me go ahead and just show you that one. To the east is Nine Mile Creek as well as a CC zoned or a CN zoned property, which is actually a city-owned property and is a future well and water site, water tank site. South, to the south is Eustick Road and then obviously the existing R4 and single-family detached residential. To the west is RUT and county agriculture residential. The comprehensive plan designates this property as mixed-use non-residential. I would like to note out of the gate that the request for annexation and zoning with the aisle zoning district is for 30.27 acres, but as noted, the subject site's only 23.7. The applicant is doing the city a favor in annexing the irrigation area of the Nine Mile and Five Mile Creek so that we do not have county enclaves in those areas. So we do appreciate that. The proposed use for this ACHD maintenance facility falls under the public utility major within our development code. The project is proposed over multiple phases from this year through 2020. The project is proposed over multiple phases from this year through twenty twenty eight and includes a number of different elements to the site that, just to be general, include a every see a decant washout area, broom shed, salt shed, truck wash and scales, admin building, fleet building, and covered and uncovered storage areas. Since the publication of the staff report, the applicant has provided staff an updated phasing plan consistent with the analysis within the staff report and discussions between staff and the applicant. The major changes were moving the decant and washout area, which is noted here. It was originally within the flood plain, moved it out of the flood plain, which is appreciated as well. And there is an existing home on site that was going to be used as a temporary office. That is no longer the case, no longer the plan. Before I get into the site plan in more detail, I did want to talk about the future land use designation because it's very important for this site. Mixed use non-residential is the future land use. The purpose of this designation, this is designate areas where new resident, non-residential, sorry, and new residential dwellings will not be permitted as residential users are not compatible with the planned or existing uses in the area. Specifically, and for this site, this mixed use non-residential area is adjacent to the city's wastewater recovery facility, as noted, which is a heavy industrial use and should be buffered from residential. Appropriate uses in this designation would include employment centers, professional offices, flex buildings, warehousing, industry, storage facilities, and retail, and other appropriate non-residential uses. The proposed use of this maintenance facility falls into these non-residential uses that are noted and are ideal for this future land use designation because it will act as a buffer between the existing residential on the south side of Eustick and the wastewater recovery facility. The applicant is proposing to install solid fencing and the required landscape buffers adjacent to Eustick and the existing county residence directly to the west, in addition to a new public collector street segment. If the property to the west develops in the future as a non-residential use, which is called for on the future land use map, it also includes that property. The buffer proposed with this application along the west boundary should act as an adequate transition between the uses. Despite the probable noise associated with a maintenance facility such as this, adequate landscaping and separation from existing residences by Eustick Road, as well as the landscape buffers, they do offer appropriate separation and should mitigate the noise from trucks and machinery. In addition to the pros use itself, the hours of operation are an important factor in determining if it fits in this location. The applicant has stated the planned uses or plans hours of operation are Monday through Friday, seven AM to five thirty, like a normal site. There will likely be occasional late nights during emergency situations. During the summer, the applicant has also stated that chip seal operations require some weekend hours, but should be within the normal daytime operating hours as well. Staff nor the applicant applicant can foresee emergency situations, so it is not feasible to mitigate every possibility associated with this use. Due to the likely minimal late night operations, staff believes the proposed development agreement provisions and screening methods will be sufficient in mitigating any noxious consequences of the proposed use. Therefore, staff finds the proposed maintenance facility to be generally consistent with the comp plan. There is an existing county residence on the property, as noted. The applicant, and that is no longer occupied. The applicant has noted that is going to be sold and removed from the site instead of being used as a temporary office. Therefore, the existing driveway access to Eustick will be closed. The proposed use is a permitted use within the requested IL zoning district, but is also subject to specific use standards. Staff's analysis finds that the proposal is consistent with the specific use standards, as well as the dimensional standards of the aisle zoning district, except for one element, and that is the street setback for aisle zoning districts to roadways. It's thirty five feet. The admin building shown in the southwest corner is shown at the twenty five foot setback to Naomi, so they'll have to shift that east ten feet. Part of the screening methods used for this project is fencing. The applicant is proposing fencing eight foot tall chain link, chain link fencing along the north and east boundaries with two feet of barbed wire above that along, and this fencing is also proposed to be coated in a colored and rubberized material. Along the west and south property boundaries, the applicant is proposing an eight foot tall trex fence, which is a solid fence. The proposed trex fencing is being strategically proposed to offer the most screening and buffering to the existing residences to the south and to the west, for that matter. Eight foot tall fencing is allowed within the aisle zoning district. And per the height definition of fencing, barbed wire is not included in the height measurement. And is also allowed within the aisle zoning district. Access is proposed via construction of a new collector street that aligns with Naomi Avenue to the south, which is this here. The applicant is proposing to construct that as a three lane fifty two foot wide street section within seventy four feet of right of way with five foot detached sidewalk on the east side, which is their side of Naomi. When the property to the west redevelops, they will be expected and required to complete the street with sidewalk on their side. Submitted plans show this new road to terminate about halfway into the site and terminate in a temporary hammerhead type turnaround. ACHD has offered their approval of the proposed Naomi Avenue extension and termination on the north side of Eustick Road. Off of Naomi Avenue, the applicant is proposing two driveway accesses for access into the facility, and they both will be gated. Staff supports the proposed access and road improvements, which do include a deceleration lane along Eustick. Lastly, utilities for this site should be discussed. Sewer services are not currently available to the site. Therefore, the applicant is also requesting a council waiver to delay connection to city sewer. Water is readily available. It is not entirely clear at what point utilities will be available or needed for the site, but due to the phasing and lack of sewer availability, at this time, the applicant has not submitted any utility plans at this time. With future development, the applicant will be required to submit these plans and continue coordinating with the city to connect to public utilities, including water for irrigation purposes for the required landscape buffers. The applicant is having ongoing discussions with the city engineer to make a decision and come to an agreement on the best path forward for the sewer needs and timeline of this project. This is expected to be resolved prior to the city council hearing. Staff is, and staff is less worried about handling it right now because there is expectation this will be handled prior to city council. The applicant and myself have had discussions with the city engineer. We just haven't quite made the final decision on what the alternatives will be at this time. Also, within the staff report, I already have DA provisions that will help the city maintain our, I would guess you could say, power in the utility and providing utilities to the site. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the requested annexation and zoning and the proposed use, and I'll stand for any questions.
This time, would the applicant like to come forward?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Becky McKay with Engineering Solutions, Business Address, ten twenty nine North Rosario in Meridian. I'm here this evening representing Ada County Highway District in the application that's before you. Joe, you want to cue, let me cue up my.
It's up on our screens and it's up on.
Nobody turned it on, okay. That's cool. I can go ahead. As Joe indicated, Ada County Highway District has purchased this particular piece of property. It's approximately twenty point seven five acres in size. When we did pre-app with the city, as Joe indicated, there were a couple of enclaves which encompassed the Five Mile Creek to the north and Nine Mile Creek, which were, had not been annexed into the city, so they asked us to do the city a favor, include that in this annexation request and within our exhibits and legal descriptions. So that's why what you see before you is thirty point two seven acres. The primary use for this particular project will be for an ACHD maintenance facility. They'll have administrative office, fleet maintenance, parts and weld shop, broom drainage, truck storage buildings, salt and sand shed, truck scales, truck wash building, decant area, fuel tanks, which will be above ground, covered storage, magnesium tanks, and employee parking, and then some open material storage at the site. Their plans for this particular site are eight phases, starting in twenty twenty one and going till twenty twenty eight. We have submitted to your staff a phasing plan so the staff could look and see what those phases would look like. One of the key things that the district wanted to do was obviously start establishing that perimeter landscaping along Eustick Road, which is a minor arterial and get that, get the vegetation growing and and meet all the requirements for adequate arterial buffering. North is your Meridian Wastewater Treatment Plant. This particular piece of property is within the influence area where you have the wastewater treatment overlay zone, so no residential uses or any uses that may have problems coexisting with your wastewater treatment plant are allowed. So ACHD looked at this particular site and said, you know, this, this obviously is, is a good area for this type of use. The city has purchased the land just to the east of us. There will be a future water tank and well on that property. And then in this particular area, we have a mixture of uses, single family, Wilkins Ranch and Dakota Ridge are to the south. I did both those subdivisions a long time ago. They're on the south side of Eustick outside of that radius. McNeilus Sub is to the east of us. I did that one. That has a mixture of retail and it has a sea store and a variety of uses that can coexist. There's mini storage in the area, so this is kind of a hodgepodge area. But north of Eustick, everything needs to be compatible with that wastewater treatment plant. We did have a neighborhood meeting on this particular property. We had three people in attendance. All three of them were glad that this site's being utilized for this type of use. No one was opposed to the project. Primary concerns were landscaping and as far as adequate buffering, and then they wanted to know when Eustick would be improved and widened. Here's the overall phasing plan that we provided to the staff. Kind of shows you what the site looks like. Obviously, we wanted to make sure that we oriented the buildings next to Eustick Road consistent with your comprehensive plan and your commercial design guidelines where it says, you know, put your, put your buildings up next to the arterials, internalize your parking, or the uses that are more intensive are obviously further north into the site closer to the treatment plant. There are two existing maintenance facilities that Ada County Highway District has in the valley right now. One is obviously down on Garden, at Garden City on Adams. Their other one is over at Cloverdale Road and Emerald. And so there is a definite need in this valley for something out in the western portion in the Meridian area with the, with the rapid growth to provide adequate services and maintenance for ACHD facilities. So there's an aerial. You can see the wastewater treatment plant is obviously the predominant use. This kind of shows you, it's turned on its side, so, so north is to the left. You can see that we kind of did a colored site plan that was to give the commission and the staff kind of a better idea of this conceptual plan. And I want to emphasize that this is a conceptual plan only for the benefit of this annexation. Obviously, the highway district will hire an architect who will then obviously come in, do the actual design of these structures, and this site plan is obviously subject to change. But we wanted to give the commission an idea of, of what it would look like. So you can see that we kind of have an L storage structure, the administration building, and then the parts and shop are kind of along that Eustick corridor. We have two approaches. The highway district will build Naomi, which is a collector roadway to the north. It'll terminate eventually. It will go on to the west serving the adjoining property. Right now, the adjoining property on the west side is a residence. An elderly woman lives there. The district has talked to her, has talked to her son about the, the use here. That property cannot develop as residential. It would have to be some type of a compatible light industrial or commercial use also if it were to redevelop in the future. Since that residential use does exist, we were required by staff to provide a twenty five foot landscaped buffer adjacent to Naomi and adjacent to that property to provide adequate buffering. One of the things that we did with this particular site is everything in here, as far as parking is concerned, is a pull through to minimize the backup beepers. This site obviously will operate, you know, kind of standard hours, starting around seven, seven thirty in the morning till five thirty. However, during the winter months, the crews due to snow and maintenance of our roadway network during the snowy season can be called out in the middle of the night to come and get these, the, the trucks, the plows, the, the salt and and sand trucks and take them out and do their maintenance purposes. Also, as Joe indicated, on, in the summer months, the chip seal crews may be out on the weekends getting things done. One of the things that was brought up to us was your pathway committee indicated that they had retained TO engineers to design a pedestrian multi-use pathway along Five Mile Creek. So we did get a CAD file from the city's consultant. We did incorporate it into this site. The staff report indicates that ACHD will construct the ten foot wide multi-use pathway adjacent to Five Mile Creek, but it would only be for their frontage, and there was some discussion in there about they would also construct the bridge. That is not the case. The bridge is offsite. That's part of the city parks department project for making connection to the multi-use pathway that we designed and constructed in McNeilus subdivision and then connecting to this multi-use pathway. We would have some type of more, we talked to the pathway committee about installing some trees and fescue because we don't want to have like a manicured type five foot buffer adjacent to that multi-use pathway. We would have a chain link. It would be coated and colored so it doesn't look, you know, so I guess steel looking like chain link does. And then for the district's safety of their, of their equipment and the public safety, that fence would be eight feet, and then it would have like a barbed wire top. We did provide some pictures of some trex fencing that would be built along the western edge and then would be built along Eustick. We'd utilize that fencing to buffer the site, but however, since these, some of these, these buildings will be under the commercial design guidelines, we don't, if the building looks aesthetically great, we don't want it obviously fenced off and not visible to, to that Eustick corridor. This, this, like I said, is the phasing plan. You can see the district's going to kind of take steps as they go along as their budget allows to start developing this site. We broke it down into different sections, so they'll be storing some materials on the northern boundary in twenty twenty one. And then you see they, on twenty twenty two, they come in and they establish that landscape buffer. And then you see they, on 2022, they come in and they establish that landscape buffer. They'll be, they are going to widen Eustick. They'll put a 300-foot turn lane and then build the Naomi collector. Naomi to the south is also a collector. When I did those subdivisions, there's an elementary school. So it is anticipated that that will be a signalized intersection. ACHD will signalize that intersection. There are two approaches to Naomi. They have no direct lot access to Eustick. Those will be gated. We have enough room where we've inset the gates, a significant amount, so that a semi-truck or a large truck could pull in and they wouldn't block any traffic in Naomi when it finally connects and goes onward to the west. You can see they will have a decant center. They have, as these different, these colors change, those represent what they're going to be building. So they'll have above-ground fuel tanks. We are in a floodway and a floodplain. So we did locate any of the uses that would conflict with the floodplain or the floodway. They will be required to obviously get a floodplain permit from the city of Meridian and meet all the FEMA requirements. So this, whoops, this kind of shows you what the finished site looks like. One of the things that I wanted to address was the utilities. Right now, there's a 12-inch water main in Eustick Road in meeting with your staff. They've indicated that there's adequate water supply to provide fire flow to this site. Right now, this is in the North Black Cat Sewer Trunk Shed. And that Black Cat Sewer is in a subdivision approximately 2,600 feet to the northeast. So one of the, the alternatives that we talked to the public works department about, I did chat with Warren Stewart about, was the possibility, there's sewer right down in Eustick at the intersection. There's sewer down in Eustick here, but there's not enough depth to sewer this property. So one of the options that we have used, that's the 10-mile trunk. So it goes over to the east to 10-mile and then into the plant. One of the alternatives that we've used in other instances where we've encountered this situation, if by chance the highway district phasing accelerates and they need to build that administrative building or build the shop, they need, obviously need central sewer and restrooms. We put in what we call a grinder pump with a small wet well, falls under the plumbing code. And then we build a small pressure line and it runs back to the nearest manhole. That would just be an interim alternative way of sewer-ing back into Meridian. Then when that trunk becomes available, then we would be able to make connection to it. So we're going to try to work out some of the details with Warren. Obviously, we don't have any civil engineering plans on the site at this time, since this is conceptual in nature only. This is the existing home that's on the property. Initially, when we submitted application, they were going to use it as a temporary interim administrative building. That plan is since gone, kind of gone by the wayside. It's difficult to convert a single family into a commercial use where you've got to meet ADA and bring it up to the commercial codes. So my understanding is they will be selling the home and it will be moved off of the site. You can see the Eustick corridor currently is just two lanes. There's no curb gutter or sidewalk. We'll be installing a 35-foot landscape buffer or 25-foot landscape buffer. The buildings will be set back 35 feet north and then a detached walk and then widening and a turn lane. This is, this is a view to the west. The property, majority of it's in agricultural production. There's just a small house or the home there on a small little bit that, with lawn and trees. This is the eastern boundary, the common boundary with the city of Meridian's property that they intend to put a water tank and a well. So we feel that, that this is a compatible use. It's consistent with your comprehensive plan. It's a public use, will benefit the community of Meridian. And ACHD is committed, like I said, with an eight-year plan to start developing this site as their budget allows. This is the trex fencing that, that we talked about using aesthetically. It'd be very pleasing, be compatible with that adjoining residence to the west. And we would use it if, in between buildings to obviously secure the site and to create a visual barrier. Here's the kind of architectural color-coded fencing. They come in different colors, browns, greens. The greens I like better because they kind of blend in with landscaping. The district is here this evening. I have three representatives, Heather, Lloyd, and Jennifer, that if the commission has any specific questions to ask of them, they're here to answer them.
Do you have any questions for staff or the applicant at this time?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Thank you for your presentation. I have one question. If we can go back to the slide where we talked about the phasing. If I, if I saw that correctly, it looked like the D cell lane off the road is not to happen until, is not scheduled to be phased in until 2024?
I think the rebuild of Eustick is scheduled for 2024, from 10-mile to Linder.
Okay.
They'd be making those improvements. At, instead of going in and just doing an interim improvement and scabbing on to the existing pavement, they'd be going in and doing a rebuild in 2024.
Okay. And then I'm also looking at the phasing on this. We go back to phase one, it looks like it's just going to be lightly used up to that point.
Yes.
It's just a guy to gravel area there that's.
Yep, some three-quarter piles that they may use out in the Meridian area.
Okay. And then if we go to phase two, I'm just trying to make sure, so you, I hopefully you can kind of put the pieces together. I'm just concerned that all of a sudden you're going to have larger trucks that are going to be blocking up a two-way, two-lane country road that doesn't have a D cell lane to get out of the way. And then you're going to have problems with passing or even entering and stuff like that. So with that not being phased in for another three years after the site's developed and ready to use, that's just the, that's kind of the concern here.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wheeler, the, the district in this phasing has always indicated to me that this is their best guess. And so obviously, when, when they start utilizing the site where they're going to need a lot, generate a considerable amount of truck traffic, that's obviously going to have to coincide with some improvements out there. I can have Lloyd. Lloyd, you want to address that?
Hello, Commission. Lloyd Carnegie, maintenance manager of ACHD. Do I need to give my address?
Yes.
3775 Adams Street, Garden City, 83714. So the, the phasing strategy is the first couple of phases is just kind of development of the site. We won't be basing our operations out of that site at first because we still have to phase in equipment, manpower, and that will be, we'll be housing it mainly out of our Cloverdale shop until this site's developed enough that we can actually start moving our operations to that, which would be once the Eustick Road has been developed and Naomi Lane is an intersection.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair. While, while he's up there.
Yeah, Commissioner Seal. Come on back.
It was, I was going to say, it was mentioned 2024. I just write from the ACHD report on this project. It says 2026 to 2030 is when that road will be developed.
In the integrated five-year work plan.
And I, I live in this mess that is Eustick and Black Cat, so.
I believe that we are looking to accelerate it in our integrated five-year work plan, which I believe is going to be going for, for our commission. So our hopes is to get that accelerated, that it would be designed in 22, right away in 23 in construction.
Okay, thank you. And I have, share the similar, and again, I live right in this area. So I, my son takes the bus on here. He doesn't actually go to Ponderosa, but I can tell you that is, it's, it's a mess. I mean, but when you get buses and trucks and everything else in there, it's, it becomes kind of a nightmare. So this question for staff is can, is there, can we condition it? In any shape or way, shape or form that?
Madam Chair.
Because I'm concerned we have, you know, we have heavy trucks that are going to be competing with buses and everything. And I mean, the section that you're building in Naomi is actually wider than Eustick is right now. So that's, to me, that's a huge concern.
Madam Chair. Members of the commission, Commissioner Seal, that you can recommend an additional conditioner DA provision that limits, I would say their, I guess their initial build-out when they can start utilizing the site. I will say that within the DA provisions already, I do have that they will construct the multi-use pathway segment along north, the detached sidewalks along Eustick and Naomi, the five-foot micro path on the west side and the landscape buffers with the first phase. So there is expectation and requirement for them to construct some of those improvements and buffering with the first phase. But I did not say that they couldn't do the gravel and paved open storage until the road was widened. So if you, commission can recommend that, obviously the applicant can then ask council to remove it or they may keep it. But commission has the power to recommend an additional provision, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I guess if that's the direction you're going, do you want to have a little more conversation about phasing and graphic in their initial phase?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I mean, at what phase do you see large trucks coming in and operating in that area? I mean, as, as far as. And, and, and yeah, and again, the concern is just the, the competition of traffic there. It's already really crazy. I mean, it's, it's just, the, the road is a parking lot at certain times of the day. Most roads in our area are, but more, you know, more so in, in this, this particular area. And with you sharing that, you know, the arterial street Naomi with, you know, across the street, getting that signalized and getting that improved would definitely be something that I would want to see before any, before we have competing traffic, especially with heavy trucks.
We take that account, definitely. Wouldn't want our trucks having to try to get onto Eustick without that signalized intersection because it would just be very difficult and unsafe. I believe our initial plan, if all goes well, is phase four is when we would start basing some operations out there. Once we actually have the drainage shed, our broom shed where our equipment actually can be stored, materials could be stored. And that's also in line with when the Eustick hopefully will be widened and then intersection.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. We want to make you sure you get your steps in tonight, so.
Any other questions for us?
Madam Chair. I don't know who would answer this. Was there consideration on using that trex fencing along the northern boundary adjacent to the, the pathway?
Mr. Grove. Or Becky?
Becky McKay. We have to have non-site obscuring fencing next to the pathway. So we have visibility on the multi-use pathway. So that's why they didn't want.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Another question here for staff. On the D cell lane, does it always have to be paved? Is that something that's a requirement on that?
That might be more of a question for ACHD, sir, but.
Okay. I'm just curious what you might see.
In general, we, it has to be able to hold, usually a fire truck is what it's always rated. So it, we would want it paved, yes. It's not something we would say, yeah, we're going to throw gravel on the shoulder and watch the trucks tip over. It might be fun to watch, but not very fun to clean up.
Well, obviously, that's not what I'm wanting, but I was just curious about to that level, so.
Yes, sir. No, and it should be paved, yes, and graded correctly.
Okay. And then how, I have a, I have a question for the applicant here. How high is that trex fencing or the paneling going to be that's on the south side of the property?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Wheeler, it's eight feet.
Okay.
That's, that's the, the tallest fence you can have in an industrial zone.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I do have a question for you, Becky. I'm almost sure of the answer, but I just want to double check. You said there, this is, it could be revised after you get the architects going, but the plan obviously would still be to have the buildings up by Eustick and the usage, the storage usage is in the back, obviously.
Madam Chair, we spent, I spent multiple, multiple months with the district, going back and forth, touring their, their existing sites and then giving them my recommendations based on the fact that, that the city likes to have those buildings oriented up toward this, towards the arterials. So, so I don't, I don't see that changing. They bought off on that as, yes, that makes sense to us. We want to have our, our administrative building look good. We want the Eustick corridor to, to be attractive. So, yeah, they bought into that. So I don't, I don't see that changing. It would just kind of be, you know, the internal things might shift a little bit. But this, this represents all of the uses they intend for the site.
Thanks, just wanted to clear that on the record. Thanks.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Joe.
Just to clarify that even further, the, I did require with him, the DA, that the, because it's an aisle zone, they have to go through designer review for any non-residential uses, right? I require that they have the buildings meet the commercial standards rather than the industrial, which will help with that look along Eustick as well, which the applicant, they're, they're fine with that.
There were, anyway, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yeah. Commissioner Seal.
Quick question for staff. The, the pathway they're constructing, it does need a bridge. Is there an indication from parks when that bridge will be put in? Are they going to do it at the same time or will that be coordinated?
Commissioner Seal, members of the commission, I have not been told their timing on that, but my, my assumption is that because we'll have this little segment missing, that they will want to do that as quickly as possible because it'll create a nice loop from Eustick all the way around the property through the McNeelis subdivision to get out to 10-mile. So my assumption is that they will want to do that as soon as possible, as soon as this segment is in. But I have not been told specifics, no.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Chair, Commissioner Seal, when, when the district installs Naomi with the detached sidewalks here, so we'll have detached walks along Eustick, detached walks along Naomi, then I also included in our 25-foot buffer, a five-foot pat micro path that runs down and connects to that 10-foot multi-use pathway. So we'll, we'll obviously, when that's signalized and people south of Eustick and can get safely to the multi-use pathway via the signalized.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed in to testify in this application?
Madam Chair, we do not.
That being said, is there anybody who does wish to testify? Please raise your hand. With that, does the applicant have any further comment? Can I get a motion to close a public hearing on H-2021-0029?
It's a move.
It has been moved in second and closed public hearing on H-2021-0029. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Seal.
I'll, I'll start out. I've already thrown my concerns out there. I, I do think we should provision this somehow to make sure that we're not getting truck traffic before the road is widened. It sounds like they want to accelerate that schedule, which I am more than happy to hear reported here because it definitely needs it. That, that region is, that area road is, is tough. So I think we should probably provision something in there to make sure that, make sure that the phase four coincides with the road widening. I am extremely happy that they are doing what they are doing with the pathways there. As somebody that rides that path three times a week, as I go to work and back, can tell you that that is an amazing addition, especially when that gets signalized because there is no safe way to cross Eustick there. You have a, it's, it's a beautiful path that that ends on one of the unsafest stretches of road imaginable. I'm less concerned about the noise and operation of it. I think enough people will understand, and even if there is a little bit generated there, I think enough people, myself included, will understand, you know, what having that presence there means.
You know, what having that presence there means, you know, when we get inclement weather or snow, we, we have another snowmageddon. Our road's going to be taken care of first. So that's a very nice thing, considering that we were kind of in one of those little squeeze alleys where I don't think anybody liked to drive that road. So very good to know that that's, that's there. And, you know, the maintenance is going to be there and the growth of the city is going to be, you know, helped with services like this that are going to be readily available within, within the areas that are having explosive growth right now. That is about all I have. Like I said, I'm, I'm happy to see this come in. So I only, only hesitation on it is just, you know, needing the road to be widened before we really get some heavy truck traffic in there.
I would tend to agree with that. And I do want to mention, I do appreciate the comment on the thought that went into making this more of a pull through. So you don't have the backing up as much beeping. So, yeah, I think it's a great use for the space in this area and a nice transition with the office areas at the front. Yeah, there are comments, Commissioner Grove.
I don't see any issues with how, how it's been presented and the discussion that we've had so far. I think having that, getting the landscaping there and kind of making, you know, something like this look nice from the street as much as possible is great. But this is a good use of that space, especially if you've toured the wastewater treatment plant. You don't want to be downwind of that too much. So I applaud you for taking that on, but this is a good use of that space.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Yes, I, I think this is a great use of this space here. I like the way that it all has the drive aisles moving forward, keeping things moving in a good direction. And it does help out one of our commissioners' commutes here with this road there. So no, just kidding with that. But I do like the fact that there's not a lot of the backup and I like the way that it's phased to. But still, there's going to have to, the way that I'm kind of seeing this even on the phasing side is there's still going to be larger vehicles that are going to have to come by that's going to, that are going to have to, you know, grade, excavate, move, pave, things of this nature still on a two lane road. And I just think it's good to get them off of the main flow before, you know, something happens. And I know that they can, you know, patch up the street if they need to or, or make it, you know, seam it in to the next extension on it. But that would be some sort of discussion or talk about how to have a D cell lane there. Either before, you know, operations open or during even the, some of the more major construction side of things. And I don't know exactly how to phase or phrase that in a, in a motion on this or what we have the parameters to do. Staff, do you have any input on that or?
I'm thinking, I might be able to give you something. One thing commissioners could use, you can just recommend that we work with the applicant on some verbiage as well as, you know, applicable to the city as well, what we can and can't enforce. That's really the key point there is, we might be able to condition something, but how do we really enforce it when it comes to the improvements? They. We don't do grading permits here. So for them to grade the site and move dirt around and start that, they're, they can do that. There's nothing to stop them, which obviously you get a greater after you're already going to have a truck and a big truck out there. So understand your concern. My point is just that it would have to be associated with something that triggers a permit where then we can look at it, which I already have some discussion of that in my staff report within the provisions for when they have to do the first certificate of zoning compliance. Which would be the first site improvements, quote unquote, which would be paving, that's an improvement. Anytime they're going to pave the site is going to trigger a certificate of zoning compliance, which then now the city has ability to condition things or check that previous conditions have been met. So the verbiage could, could be worked out. I would say, I would ask that you just leave it a little open for staff to have our ability to work with the applicant as well as other staff to figure that out.
Okay.
Mr. Lurcher.
Um, I live in that area as well, Madam Chair. And we, we actually have property at U stick in McDermott. There's hundreds of large trucks going by U stick every day between Ohio, Hawaii High School, all the subdivisions that are going on in McDermott at McMillan. And ACHD is putting a traffic light in at Black Cat and U stick. They're getting ready to put turn lanes in at U stick and McDermott for anticipation of traffic for the high school. So the fact that there are already big trucks enjoying their Jake breaks all day long up and down U stick. And those of us who work and live over there are very used to that. And you just, it's just a workaround, you know, for Commissioner Seal and his family, you just kind of figure it out. I don't have a problem with the phasing in of the trucks. ACHD is not going to bring their traffic in until they're ready to do so. But to, and to, to expect that there's no big truck traffic on U stick right now is, it's there, it's already here and it's, and then I, and then 2022 is when ITD is going to be starting highway 16. So there'll be more. So this is just going to be part of this, part of the community for the next eight years, really. So they know the roads better than anyone and how to move their equipment around. And I, I have no problem with how this is being presented without any modifications, but I'll support whatever you feel like you want to do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Seal.
There's been several times that we have had. People submit applications and we have had to say, if only the roads were better. So now that we have ACHD submitting an application, I want to make sure that the roads are better before this goes in. Because they are the deciding body on this. So that's, personally, that's why I would like to provision something in there to make sure that their phase four hinges on the widening of U stick road. That's, that's my personal opinion on it. So I, I'm, you know, I'm having to wear two hats today as a commissioner. You know, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at this, I'm excited about it. There's a lot of things that are, that are great about it. I also share the concerns about traffic, but living in the area, I also have to wear that hat too. Having kids running around in the area, have to wear that hat too. So there's a lot of really good things about it, but I just definitely want to make sure that the, you know, the phase four construction of this, I don't want to slow it down. I just want to make sure that the road improvement piece of this hinges on their. The phase, phase four completion hinges on the widening of U stick road.
Yeah, so I think you could make the recommendation on the phase four. I think the, the turnout is, I don't know, is, the D cell lane, you know, while they're doing those first couple of phases, I don't think it's going to be utilized. The facility is not going to be utilized until they get to phase four. I mean, in its.
Absolutely.
Full capacity, so.
And Commissioner Lurcher is right. I mean, there, there's, there's trucks, I mean, there, there's no getting away from construction any, anywhere that we go. So I just. You know, again, we have the, the deciding body that can widen that road, committing to widening the roads. I want to make sure that we, we do that.
Yeah, as, as I was going to say, how much are you delighting in?
Let's take that opportunity.
Yeah, because we have this discussion at every meeting.
Yes.
The traffic of the roads, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Commissioner Seal, what, what do you think about something along the lines of not just conditioning on phase four? Because sometimes there's parts that go into it can change because this is just a comp, right? And just kind of a target area, maybe before operations start there or maybe it's being used or I, the C vo, I mean, I don't know how you. What, what, what would be the trigger on this? But you know, something like what staff was saying, something that could peel into, where they would also be able to work with the applicant and be able to have some latitude to maybe buy a permit, a certain permit or something.
Madam Chair. Question more for Joe, and you know, just in, and you're right, this is a proposed plan that we have here. So I mean, and that's what I was looking at is basically the proposed phase four completion is how I had it written. But what is the trigger for phase four that we would recognize that, that when that comes to, to city staff? That this is phase four, this is when the road needs to be widened, is it widened, is it not? That, and I, I struggle with that wording for a motion myself.
Understood, yes, sir. Commissioner Seal, commissioners, that they're going to trigger a CCC before phase four anyways, because of the landscaping. At that point, we would, we could verify whether or not they have widened the road. But if you. We will, staff as well as the city, we want the landscaping to be installed as close to the front of this as possible. So that the vegetation is at least close to maturity and growing by the time actual use of the site gets done. I don't necessarily want to delay that, but. I, I see your points, I do. You could add a condition in there that says, you know, they can't get their first CCC until the road is widened. But again, that slows all of it down. So I don't know if you necessarily want to do that. My understanding is that they really won't be utilizing much of the site until 2024 because of the signal already. So I don't know if we're allowed to do an actual timing, but again, timing changes. So I don't know if putting a year on it is probably not a good idea. Now, you could just say. Per the phasing, they're not allowed to obtain a CCC for any building. Until the road is widened. Because the phasing is showing that with the right turn lane, they will also have additional buildings, which will require and be part of the CCC.
Is there something that triggers when that phase is complete? Or is it basically, there's something in there that says, yes, you can start, but there's nothing in there that really says it's complete?
The completeness part would be, they're going to have to pull some kind of building permits for these.
Okay.
So whenever, it won't be CO because none of them have occupancy. They're just storage things, but there will be building permits and which, to which we have to sign off.
And I think that's, I, I don't want to delay anything, but I definitely want to hinge this on there, you know, somehow. And I mean, everybody's here, I think everybody, I don't want to belabor the point, but I just want to make sure that we get the, the right verbiage in there. So I, I think. What I would propose is on their proposed phase four completion. That, you know, to include every, the agency's heavy truck traffic will to be dependent upon widening the U stick road and signalizing Naomi. I think that's probably enough to. I think everybody will understand the intent.
I think so. And I, I think that's safe. I think that's what, frankly, I think that's what ACHD is planning and doing anyways. So, understood.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seal.
Okay, Madam Chair. After considering all staff, applicant and public testimony, I move to recommend approval to the city council file number H 2021 dash zero zero two nine. As presented in the staff report for the hearing date of June 17th, 2021, with the following modifications. That the proposed, proposed phase four completion to allow the agency's heavy truck traffic will be dependent upon widening U stick road and signalizing Naomi Avenue.
Second.
It has been moved in seconded to recommend approval for H dash 2021 dash zero zero two nine with modifications. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. One more motion, please.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved in seconded to adjourn the June 17th, meeting, planning zoning meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.